Democrats. There were only two reasons. What's that? One. That hasn't been a relevant address since Janet Gray. Since Janet. Janet was my second boss. Yeah, because he had Healy was there for eight years. And then Tom Grandy was there for almost eight years and now it's.
He actually worked at.
He's the. He's the. He's the. Oh, yeah. That's what. He's in talk. I've. I've never met him, but that's kind of service director. Uh, city engineer who worked with us. Yeah. The city. Uh, Jimmy was. Well, he's. He's. He's still there, but Chris Morris. Oh. Chris. And all of you. You didn't know this because of the interim. I did remember interim. So. But before that it was. Tip. Oh, my gosh. Hey, Jeff. About four years or so. Sorry. If you. What's that? Uh, I'm not gonna say. He came back. I was. But I was with city. City. Yeah. Oh, my gosh. I remember. Um, but. Yeah. Yeah, it's good. I mean, it's. I'll. I was. He went to parks. Jimmy. Totally. It's like, you know.
I don't know if it's. We can wait or we try.
Yes.
To find the radar.
Dan. Question. Dan. Yeah, Dan. Question. Something by a property something. Because he has been. Just like. It's like Sam's parks, like you. How to be able to control. Yeah. So I should. That's just. Same thing. No. I was in the city. Just being around the world. Seventy years. And we're operating. We work fifteen different areas. And now. They don't change. They don't. They don't. So they're happy. City. That's. It's the building. It was that. Yes. That one. And I understand. Yeah. Out there. So. I was reading. Three, two, three, two. It's. It's. So you. Yeah, because it's good. It's like. Training. That's. You say. I'm doing a little critical thinking. It's. Really successful. Yeah. Good. Not. Not all. Yes. And he gets. Chinese. What a world. Come on. Super. So. On. So. Very. Position. I think it was open. I was in the camp. So. I'm so. Yeah. Because. You see. He's a good person. Yeah. And. Because of. Yeah. That's. I should say. Yeah. No, I. I just. This. The team that they have. They're a good thing going. Forty years.
This is. Kind of. Part of all that, but it is separate. Because if we want.
Fred first. He was his name. Fred first. He's like. I'm prepared. Going to facilities. He's great.
Purpose tonight is to be.
Very sure. I'm new. But we're gonna make your business. There's a lot of tools that can. Didn't. Do last. Just. I don't want. I don't want to stand down. At the time. It was. Sure. Yeah. Well. We'll just. See. So tired of. I know. Jeff came out. They are. Yeah.
Well, they wanted. It's like. Once. Two jobs, you know. Right here. He said, but um.
It's just. Two. After. Not working. I mean, that was making it go by two. Right. Yeah. Even five year contract. I was like. Board members. I mean, we never want all that. Those. So anyway. But. You know, you came to the same place for so long. You don't realize how. Just. How much. You got. Down. In class. Because I would be. Do this. But then. I really enjoy. Because I. Tell them. I really. This part. In. That. Like. But these are things that. That. Yes. The. Realness. It is. However. My thing. Yeah. My. Will be.
Yeah.
That's. It's. It should. I'll be. Should. But. It is. It's. It is. It's interesting. You get to see. It's. See. But it's. You probably. That's. I think. I think. Have. There's. A governor. So. Something. You. You start to. You're missing. You. Or. You can get. You may not be. Yeah. But. That's. What's possibly. My. Yeah. What do you need to know? Personality. Personality is. Drives. Yeah. And. It's. I have to. Oh, yeah. You can speak. Wow. I know. I can't. Yes. We're. That will have a session. Right. I mean. Yeah. It's. So. Yes. It's. Yeah. The. I don't. See. This. And. Too. But. I'm. One. Oh. Woo. It's. I'm. One. Set out. How are you? Woo. All. That was. Spock. That's. I. Did. I was. Yeah. I don't know. I don't. I think. I suppose. See. Because you were. You cost. I'm. Do you have somewhere else? On. Yeah. Yeah.
Tomorrow. Yeah. Oh, she has. Yeah.
Yeah.
How about now? Okay. To. David. So now they have this. It's. And. And. Um, how. Being. I. Should. I don't. But. She. Has. The. She's. Really. Good. And. How could. Don't. Be. Yes. Yes. But. She. Always. I just. I just. I think. I work. This. So. There it is. Here. Probably first this morning. I should. Two weeks. Oh. So. Just on the car. Probably craft. Little. I'm. Okay. So. But it was cold. Yesterday. This morning. Yeah. She ran more. She's very. Nice. This morning. She's very. Good. Freezing. Everything. Had a lot of. I actually expect her. Down. This. I'd like. She has. She's thirty. They like. Yeah. But. I'm. Well. Right. Yeah. Rush hour. Where. Over. We're. Yeah. For. Yeah. We're. Yeah. It's. I don't. I don't. Do anything. You were saying this. I'm. Never. Tell her. I'm. Change. I'm. Here's. For. Oh. Oh. Gee. Gentlemen, how are you? Hey. Everybody. Just don't worry. Hey, no. Kids. I'm sure.
Oh, good evening. Welcome to the regular council meeting of Bedford City Council. So if you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Quick call roll please.
Lou Hardy.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Asbury.
Here.
Longino.
Here.
Cochee.
Here.
Spinks. Here. Salvy.
Here. Also, you have the minutes of the work session of March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance? By Spinks, second by Lou Hardy. Call roll please.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Asbury.
Yes.
Longino.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Salvy.
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Any corrections to those? Seeing none, can I have a motion for acceptance by Smith, second by Asbury? Call roll please.
Lou Hardy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Asbury.
Yes.
Cochee.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Salvy.
Yes. Yes.
Reports. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Few items this evening. So follow up to the grant that the city received for seventy-five percent of the costs associated with the demolition of ninety-seven Norfield. The city does have to work through an asbestos survey as well as a phase one study. That's per the grant requirements due to land bank, so that is taking place now. Once that's completed, we'll work to get final cost. Cost quotes to remove that structure. Staff members completed a grant application, just under five hundred thousand dollars to the state of Ohio. That is to construct a bike and hike trail from the Commons to Viaduct Park. It'll also make improvements to the public crosswalk in the heart of the historic district as well as establishing a sidewalk down Taylor where there is none at this time. A lot of those improvements identified were a result of the T L C I study that was conducted last year. And those were the big ticket items from public's feedback. So that grant application is submitted and we will wait for award notices. The fire department, as well as the police department and the service department, they're going to be taking place in a train derailment exercise that is being put onto the Office of Emergency Management through the county. They were looking at a location to perform this exercise for training purposes. And we are having them, and they selected to do it in Bedford. And initially, our fire department is clearly involved with that exercise, but we also felt that it was proper to bring in our police as well as service. Grass notices have gone out. And again, one of the things that we work to do is send a friendly notice to anyone with zero water usage or the minimum. So anyone that is one person in your home and you're not using, don't get alarmed by that letter. It's just the easiest way where we can pull information from the water department to ensure that it gets to any vacant or bank owned or or other unoccupied properties, so those notices are received. Last two items, staff and our engineers conducted a road assessment that has been completed. We will be working to make recommendations on which street should be included in this year's road program. And then we will present those to city council and go out to bid. One item that we were able to take off of that that list was the restoration of the two parking lots at the Ellwood Community Center, which needed to be resurfaced. We were able to get a grant for that work and we're working to schedule that in August. Once the road, as I said, the roads that are identified, and even though we did a road assessment, we had a pretty good idea of the streets that we need to take care of this year. There's two challenges that I think will warrant further discussions with council is the amount of money that we're spending annually for a road resurfacing. Two issues are roads don't last as long as they used to. Roads aren't going to last twenty to twenty-five years anymore. Number one, and number two, we used to be able to five or six streets for five hundred thousand dollars. We are lucky if we do two. So we're going to be discussing that a little more, especially during budget period, possibly allocating additional funds for the years to come for our annual road program. And also exploring some other large scale improvements as far as a large road program citywide. And lastly, just a quick announcement, this Saturday, Parks and Recreation Department is having an egg hunt for the children. That'll be taking place at the high school stadium. End of report. Oh, I'm sorry. One last thing. Board meeting next Monday, the fourteenth for wards three and four. Thank you.
Mr. Director.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report tonight. Just Happy Easter, everybody.
Or is it Merry Christmas?
Yeah.
Snow.
Yeah.
Our finance director is off for a good reason. She's about to become a grandma, I believe. So. Happy for her and. It's also with her family, so. We will move on with the council reports. Mr. Lou Hardy.
Just want to remind. What Mike just said, board meetings next week. Our ward, Ward three, my ward and Congressman Smith. I have a little more, a lot more detail of what's going on out in that area. We got a lot of improvements, a lot of things, projects going on. Hopefully, we get more people here for the board meeting and go over some detail of what's going on in the city. Report. Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Good evening. Once again, board meetings, Ward four, all of my constituents, please come out. Stop going on the internet trying to get information. Please come and get it from us directly. This town has a lot of internet warriors and keyboard warriors. All kinds of different. This information has been put out there. Please, 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 my constituents, come to the board meeting. Happy Easter. End report. Thank you.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. First on my list, the chipper service is already underway this week, so if you missed that, the next chance is Monday, May fifth. Please call ahead and let them know that you've got items that need chipped. The mitten fence. I want to thank the Recreation Department, Sarah Gannati, Mike Calhan, the Senior Knitting Club, that did a fantastic job taking over the mitten fence this year from the B D A. I don't know exactly how many items were knitted and distributed to the fence, but I believe it was well over two hundred. So fantastic job and looking forward to them doing it again next year. Previous report talked about solicitors. We do have one verified permitted person that has a lot to solicit legally in the city Bedford. Young man by the name of Tavon Williams from Energy Choice. He's the only one at this point, and he was just just given the permit on April third. So he went through a background check. Deputy Suss told me he's he's good to go. Now, that doesn't mean you have to speak to him when it comes to your door. You don't have to answer the door, but just know that this young man went through the process to do it legally, and I commend him for that. So again, Tavon Williams for Energy Choice.
Excuse me, but that's not an endorsement either.
No, no. It's just an endorsement for the young man that he did it legally. That's all. Last thing I have, I've heard a couple of calls to police lately for these Orbeez guns. And we've gone through this the last couple of years. I don't think last year was so bad, the previous year there were several reports. And what they are is they're they're plastic little machine gun looking things that shoot little gel pellets. And it seems like the kids go ahead and freeze these gel pellets, so when they hit you, they hurt. We've had a couple instances lately where there have been reports of people walking around with guns. And luckily, the ones that I actually saw, I was going downtown when the call came in, and it was red and green and yellow. It was brightly colored, so it's not easily mistaken from a regular gun, right? But they're still dangerous. I read a story today about eleven year old girl that was playing in a park across from her house, and this was in Middletown, Ohio. Eleven year old girl was playing in a park across the street from her house, and six individuals came up and started threatening her with these guns. Luckily, only one out of the six shot at her, but he hit her as she was running to her yard, up her front steps. They were pelting the door with these Orbeez gel things. She got fifty different bruises and welts on her body just from one individual, because they fire like a machine gun. It's rapid fire. You know, you're not going to stop these kids from getting them, but please don't go out in public with these things. Stay in your house or your yard. Maybe a park setting, I don't know. You know, that's probably not the best idea either, but just know that bad things can happen if you're out in public with these guns, so let's just just keep it to your. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Longino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank the Rec Department. Speaking of having babies, I'll be expecting another grandchild next month, and we had the baby shower at the Rec Center in Ellwood, and it was outstanding, and everybody said how nice it was. So everybody out there, remember the Rec Center, we do have it. I didn't get the big room, it was just perfect size. So anybody thinking about needing something or going to need something in the future, call the Rec Department, they do a great job there. Once again, last time I was up here, I talked about the little Bearcats football team, and I said my brother didn't have any kids, and he said, hey, man, don't say that. People. He does have kids, they're just grown, is what I meant to say. So he doesn't have any kids on the team anymore, he just does, they're still at the kindness of his heart, and he's the commissioner and one of the coaches. So the little Bearcats are still looking for cheerleaders and coaches. This is the flyer, and he, like before, he told me it's okay, so now you're looking, so I did it right this time, Terrence. But Coach Thomas is his name, and his number is two one six, two five four, eight two oh seven. That's Coach Thomas, two one six, two five four, eight two oh seven. Frank talked about it, and I was going to say it too, I got a new saying that I came up with, step up to the mic and not to the keyboard. Because we got a lot of people out there, and I had a person, he said, I called him out, I'm calling him out again. I told you to come here, you're not here, because I'm looking around, you're not here. Doing it online doesn't help. You need to be here, if you want to call me out, call me out while you're right up here on the mic, and you'll see my expression. Or, you know, or I won't get to reply to it, but at least we could talk afterwards, but that's the place to go, that's the place to be right here. So. I thought the weather had broke, I think I said something, I must have called that storm in, because I said something about the weather being broken, then I looked out there, I saw it was snowing, so it was bad today, but hopefully this isn't. But, you know, since Dick Goddard's been gone, the weather hasn't been right anymore, right? But I'll leave it at that, so I have nothing else but happy holidays, and I used to take my nieces and nephews to that Easter egg hunt, and I think a couple of times it snowed. So hopefully the weather will be good for that, but it's a great time to take the kids, they have a ball, it's a lot of fun there, so I have nothing else, I yield my time.
Thank you. This is Spinks.
Good evening. Well, speaking of Dick Goddard, that was our roast, our Tim Taylor roast, which was the twenty-nine for Dick Goddard. It was brought up several times for all the bloopers and stuff over the year, but what a great event, over four hundred something people attendance. The most money that the historical has raised in a society has raised in a long, long time. Can't thank Tim Taylor and his wife and his family enough for bringing this and doing this for the historical society. And also, it just Jimmy DeAngelo, who's in Bedford, and his wife Patty both, again, we could not have done this without them. Jim Wagner, who a lot of y'all don't see, because he's in the back, he's doing this video. Jim, we couldn't have, it was so successful because of the mighty little committee of nine people that we had that put on this big event. A lot of inside jokes went on that night. It was just, it made, even though it was at Sherwood Forest, it was, it made Bedford shine. So we had so, we've already had so many people, if you haven't got a chance, get up there and see the exhibits. So we had so, we've already had so many people, if you haven't got a chance, get up there and see, uh, the exhibits, the Tim Taylor exhibit is, uh, more open. Tuesday through Friday, we will be opened up this coming up Saturday. And, uh, we're open on Tuesday and Thursday from ten to four, Wednesday and Friday from ten to two. So you can always call up, that's your, we do private little, uh, tours too. Uh, videos will be on sale if you were not able to make that event, videos will be coming up, uh, in a couple of weeks. Uh, again, Jim Wagner, his company's working on that, uh, we will have, uh, we will get proceeds from that also. So our numbers are going up, uh, got a lot of donations in for that, so we, we don't have a final count. Um, just off the, uh, of the dinner itself, we're looking at over eighteen thousand dollars. So that's pretty amazing, uh, that was just off of that, not what we've still got coming in. So, uh, again, I can't thank, uh, the committee, uh, enough for doing this. Um, let's see, that will be on our webs, or, uh, the video, you can purchase it, information will be up on the website, probably Jim said about two to three weeks. Uh, this coming Friday, the, the, uh, speaker series, April eleventh, is this one's gonna be on Lost Ghost Stories of Cleveland. The author, uh, an investigative historian, William Kreitchi. And that will be at seven o'clock, that's free, we do accept donations. And, uh, that's in the, uh, community room, the old church. Let's see, strawberry festival dates are set for June thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth. And the strawberry pies are already being ordered, so you can see me, I can give you the information. And a big thank you again to the mayor's wife, Marilyn Colchi, does all the baking, she takes all the orders. Um, what, we sold about eighty pies last year or what?
Seventy.
Seventy something, and then we auctioned one off for seventy-five dollars. So they're twenty dollars, we get all the proceeds. And again, this year, we're striving again, there will be fresh strawberries, strawberry, strawberry, strawberries, it is a strawberry festival, so. It was very successful last year and, um, let's see. Um, Green Cross Road, still, please be patient, uh, residents in that area. I know the potholes, uh, ground where the cupboard was done is pretty bad, Mike, we're looking at still a couple more weeks on that, but there, of course, the rain and stuff, so. Yep, good thing about it, it has slowed down the speeders on, uh, Green Cross, so that's the only good thing about it, but, uh, little concerns, some residents are concerned about the wear and tear of their car. Myself going down there several times today, I have a little concern too. Uh, Mike, we're still, I'm still getting some complaints off of the loud, the security speakers. It's going off at Simon's, used to be, the, the right next to Broadway Diner. Um, it's still, they're still calling the company, they called the police when it happens. But it's one of those alert and I can hear it at my house, 'cause it goes off and it's like step away and, and it's really, really loud. I can, that's on Broadway and I can hear it on my house at Grand. Um, I could talk to you today again about the speeders, I was out this weekend, a little late, but a lot of people that know that come down, um, Grand Boulevard know that around Easter, it looks like Easter threw up in my front yard. I've known, um, Bob hates, it, well, my house is known as Easter Buddy's House, so if you haven't seen it, take a drive down and there's over a thousand eggs, uh, the kids, I have schools and stuff that come to get their picture taken, so it's fun. I started this with my grand, granddaughter, our oldest granddaughter was two and she's gonna be fifteen. So I add to it every year, so it's fun, the neighbors like it, they walk down, the seniors and the little kids, and, um, end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Salvi?
Uh, good evening. Uh, special War Two meeting will, will be held here in the city council chamber on Monday, April twenty-eighth, seven P.M. Uh, resident visits and calls are responding to several resident concerns since the last council meeting. Thank you again to Michael, Debbie, the building department and other city workers who have resolved or in the process of resolving resident concerns. Veteran Municipal Court, eight one three High Street, housing and vehicle violations. This morning I attended a veteran municipal court hearing regarding the multiple, multiple citations regarding eight one three High Street. The property is owned by a Jamaican national who has repeatedly ignored multiple city notices to clean up the property, including unclated commercial and passenger vehicles on the property. The terrible property condition and number of vehicles on the property has negatively impacted other residents' quality of life and ability to enjoy their property. Uh, thank you to our fine city manager, building department, police department, and city prosecutor in taking legal steps to demand compliance from this homeowner in criminal court. The judge has given the homeowner thirty days to clean up the property. Uh, Bedford's Downtown Business District, there's a lot of trash, dirt, and debris that blow down the downtown business district sidewalks. When I clean up the law office sidewalk in the morning, there's trash and debris on the sidewalk again by noon. The trash blows down from other properties that don't clean up their sidewalk. By the time I leave for work, there's even more debris. Uh, may suggest the city consider scheduling a weekly downtown sidewalk cleaning to keep the downtown sidewalk free the most trash and debris. If you want businesses to move to Bedford and attract visitor dollars, it makes sense to keep Bedford streetscape free of trash and debris, so people don't have to shuffle through piles of accumulated debris. Uh, stolen dumped shopping carts, I've noticed more shopping carts discarded around town as well in War Two. It's a bad look and reflection on the city. I found over twenty-five stolen shopping carts just in War Two, when I ran for city council. Many of those disposed on apartment building properties on Soane Road. More recently, I've seen carts on Broadway, Columbus, Northfield, and Mike Street, Taft Avenue, just to mention a few incidents. Uh, Mike, John, what is the city's policy dealing with abandoned shopping carts on public or private property? And is there ordinance that addresses stolen or dumped shopping carts?
I, I don't know, I don't know if there'd be, and if there's an ordinance on those for specifically, if there's some in the public right of way or if they're left on public property, we, we'll collect them. Um, private property, ultimately, we can write somebody, uh, in order to clean that up.
Thank you.
Uh, Bay Market Property, six of seven Northfield Road, since my last council report, I am happy to see cleanup progress being made at the Bay Market Property, the debris in the parking lot is finally being removed. Most of the junk that was either taped or blocking the storefront window has been removed, which is a visual improvement. The building inside now out continues to need extensive cleaning and repair, now continue to monitor the progress. Mike, I'm not an engineer, but it appears to me that there is extensive construction going on in the interior of the property and city permits, uh, should be required. Um, has the new owner pulled permits yet?
No, our staff were, our staff was out, I believe, a week and a half ago. Um, I'm trying to think, it was either Thursday or it might've been last Monday. Uh, and they were inside and there was no electrical, no plumbing, or no like major wall movement that would require permitting. Cleanup doesn't. Um, they would need, uh, construction documents for exterior retaining wall improvements and other concrete improvements on the exterior. But interior to date, they've done nothing that would require them to pull permits.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Taft Park playground, or, excuse me, just generally Taft Park. Um, I received one resident complaint of a suspicious van and SUV making a transfer of unknown items from the van to the SUV, SUV, at approximately two forty-five A.M. in the morning in the Taft parking lot. During one of my park checks, I also encountered three vehicles and several people after the park's closing time. I spoke with them about the park, park closing time, everyone was friendly and agreed to leave the park since it was past closing time. One continuing issue at the park is trash and sometimes broken glass. In another park check, we observed an adult male parked in the parking lot throwing his trash out of his car onto the ground. They called dispatch, but was told an officer must see the violation. Uh, John, because of the ongoing trash issue, enforcement of the or, ordinance is needed to, uh, is needed to change behavior. If I was willing to sign a complaint as a witness to the violation, is that an option?
Where, where was this at, Ian?
Pardon?
Taft Park. I would say so, sure. You file a complaint and yes, I don't know if you could actually cite, sign the citation, but you could, make a, call me up to make a report and they could cite them. I don't think you have authority to sign the citation, but they could.
Thank you.
Uh, travel, travel out of state, I may be out of state for a week or two this month. If residents have a city-related issue, please call the city hall for assistance if you are unable to reach me by phone or email. Thank you, end of report.
Thank you. Move along with, uh, new business. You have a motion?
Yes, can we get a motion to accept the planning commission's decision to deny Tammy Ritchie of Trend, I, I don't know if I'm saying it correctly, Trend Services LLC, who wished to open a short-term rental located at thirty-two Leonard Street in Bedford. The applicant failed to appear.
Uh, and with this, a yes means you agree with the denial, a no means you disagree with the denial. Call the roll, please. I'm sorry. Motion by Lou Hardy, second by Spinks?
Okay. Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Colchi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Uh, next motion.
Uh, can we get a motion to accept the planning commission's decision to deny Tiffany Johnson of Essence Residential Care Facilities to open a group home located at four four, uh, six thirty Road in Bedford on the grounds of parking concerns, not compliance with the Ohio relevant, or fire codes in regards to occupancy numbers? That weren't clear.
And can I have a? Pardon?
On her side, to speak on. I just wanted to let you know, 'cause a lot of people didn't show up and I wanted to come in and just give a little bit of information about this final decision.
I'll give you a minute, okay.
Thank you.
State your name and address.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Johnson. My address is four four six, turn it road. Um, last time I was here, maybe I did go into a lot of detail about who I am and what I do in the city of Bedford. Um, I've been a resident in Bedford for about eight years. I own My Guardian Home Healthcare Downtown Bedford and I also own Rudy R. Clothing Store Downtown Bedford. Something special about My Guardian Home Healthcare, I send individuals out to private pay people in the city of Bedford. People that cannot come outside, people that are enclosed. And, um, we do a lot of things, we have nurses there, we marry people, we notarize there, we do background checks with the, uh, the government and, you know, a lot of things, just a lot of things, it's like a very professional business place, so my heart goes out to caring for people that are, you know, born with developmental disabilities or people that have like united bug eye, care sort of in the passport. So this has been going on for a very long time, so I'm not just an average Joe just showing up, hey, I want a group home. So this is what I've been doing all my life. Right now, I'm a med tech, I work twelve hours every day, I've been working twelve hours for a whole month straight, so. This is one of my dreams, to keep on building and bringing in money and using Bedford resources to my, uh, residents and the group home. So, um, I notice other group homes in, in Bedford, they're pretty much the same, there's no difference. The parking, the home is beautiful, is a great setting for it, there's no more than two cars in the parking lot. It even have a garage, so the parking can fit at least one, two, three, maybe four cars. But there is never no more than two cars in that parking lot. And I'm catering, you know, straight to female, I don't want six. I don't even want five, I just want maybe four, no more than five. This is a quiet, no in and out, any resources they have, they would be outsourcing. So there is no in and out foot traffic all day, you will barely even notice it's a residential group home unless you physically came to the building department and asked. So maybe, um, I wanna say the last meeting wasn't so very clear. There is no sprinkler system, there is nothing to be done to this property at all. So, um, me and nurses work hand in hand, registered nurses and, uh, med techs, we specialize in medicine. So, um, I'm very knowledgeable about what I'm doing. Um, it's just last time I left in a little bit of defeat. You know, I, I'm not gonna be afraid, I was crying the whole way to work, but this is what my heart desires.
Okay, take your time.
This is what my heart likes, this is what I do for a living. This is what I do for a living, so when I come up here, this is all I know, I've been doing this since seventeen years old. I've been in the nursing field that long, I knew what I'm gonna do since high school. You have a lot of, you have a lot of homes out here. And I see some of the residents outside, I see them walking, you know, with no direction, not getting cared for properly. My residence is the only residence that's monitored twenty-four seven. That caters to these people, families, I am their family, my team, my, my staff are their family. It's not, um, a lot of, of staff in there, every five people, you only need one employee there. So, um, I was just left last time with a little, a little defeat in my heart, because I've been here for so long, since I became a resident, I've been opening up business after business after business after business out here. I notarize and, uh, do apostles free for all of the veterans. Like, I really do a lot of positive work out here. And I don't never, you know, get noticed, this year I wanted to say, hey, I wanted to get more involved in the business side of what Bedford have to do, I wanna start coming to the meetings. I'm the youngest person in this, in this room and I, I have a lot of guts. A lot of people didn't wanna come here today, but I swallowed my pride, my legs are shaking, but I, I wanted to come in front of you guys and state my purpose. If I can just, um, shed a light on the positive things that people can do, you know, to help people with disabilities and, you know, attend the strawberry festival, attend the, uh, historical society, you know, fundraisers and stuff. It's a lot of things that you can do, I actually take these residents with me. I am responsible to even have the, you know, the hard to take in clients and residents and make them your responsibility. They are yours, you are to take care, to stay come every, every year, if not every six months. So it's not only going through the inspections, through the building department of Bedford. Medicate care for these people, they do not play about these people. These residents, they are, they are human, they have rights and they come, I have to be on my Ps and Qs just as, you know, as much as coming in front of you and stating my claim today. So it's not like, no, hey, I'm getting approval from Bedford, I can do what I want to do, no, you get unannounced visits. You have to have, um, thirty-day, uh, menus, you have to be able to feed these people, you have to be able to clothe and everything. They come with their own finances, I don't want anything from them, I want them to be able to come to my residence, breathe, enjoy, um, entertainment, field trips, everything Bedford, you know, have to provide as far as the, the events. Just like, um, he was stating that, uh, his, his people do, uh, baseball, he's looking for coaches and stuff like that. I want my residents to be able to, you know, attend stuff like that, be able to be on the team and stuff like that, so it's not like you come here and you're closed in a door, this is not a nursing home. You're not just shutting the room, you're actually doing activities, we're actually resourcing, um, you still have independence, you wanna work, you're still gonna work. So it's not like having little children, we're having grown adults. They can clean up after theyself, they're not messy. So I'm gonna stay on them to make sure they still gain their independence. So that's my goal, I wanna make sure it's not a lost soul taken, like, no, you're gonna be full of life, you're gonna go to the movies, you're gonna have friends, you're gonna um, do social sho, uh, services with the mental health or whatever you need to do. I'm gonna be that person to take care of my staff and make sure it get done. So that's my heart, I've been doing it forever, so like I say, I, I have a lot of businesses in Bedford and I wanna continue to grow with Bedford. I reside in Bedford, my children reside in Bedford, my family reside in Bedford, so it's not like I'm, I'm outsourcing. I'm trying to stay where I reside and build where I reside. I pay my property taxes, I pre, uh, I pay, um, not property taxes, my business taxes every year. So it's like, I, I don't have a record, I do background checks, pro guardian fast fingerprints, the high attorney general's office, it'll list seven nineteen Broadway. Everybody comes to me like they would go to, uh, um, a license bill to get their background checks. If you need to go to Florida, I'm doing your background checks, I even travel to people's homes, you know, to do power attorneys, you know, anything. But I stay inside of Bedford and do all of this. So I was just, um, I guess I was just a little bit, you know, I'm, I'm good right now, so. I was just a little, you know, like I say, my feelings was hurt because I do a lot, you know, so that was it.
Yeah, I don't think it was anything personal on there. What I said, I have a clarification like on the fire codes and stuff like that that weren't addressed or could be answered?
Can, can this be referred back to them with new information or how's that work? I suppose that's possible, I would have to go look real fast, let me think. I mean, she could reapply, I suppose, if, if, uh, if he decided to deny it, but, uh, obviously she has to comply with the, the fire, uh, codes and, and the building codes, otherwise.
Sprinklers, what I was saying.
Yeah, I mean, so if it, if it requires a sprinkler system, you'd have to build a sprinkler system. If it requires whatever there is, you're gonna have to do it, uh, to operate a residential facility. So I guess it's up to you guys whether or not you want to know or not. I don't know if, uh, going back to planning will solve anything, it's ultimately gonna be your decision anyway.
Do I have any questions? Any questions?
We could, we could have this go back in the end, vote and, and, uh, save it until, bring it back up another time after she talked to them and she gets that taken care of, what she was saying. As far as the, the, uh, the issues.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're, but, but, I guess the issues are that there's no exact plans, that's, that's the issue, we don't know how many people are coming here, we don't know what she needs to do, you know, what type of inspections, we haven't inspected the premises, it's, uh, you know, we don't know what she needs to do, but so, I, it sounds like she wants to do it, which I commend her, but I mean, we're not, you know, I think I don't know what the exact plan is, or I, I don't think anybody does.
Can I speak one more time? I have the, in, the whole inspection report from the, um, mental health society, the, all the inspections. I did the, uh, fire, I only needed a fire inspection and a heating and cooling, completed that, they, it was great, they can approve it until the building department came out. It's only four to five people, if you have six or more people, you need a sprinkler system. I will never have six people in that house ever. So I do not need a sprinkler system, it's just like if I had one, two, three, four, you guys live with me, I would just be feeding you, clothing you, making sure you get to your, your appointments, your job, and that's it. And I would, if you need your social workers, I will be driving you to see your social worker, it's pretty much that simple. And like I say, it's other, um, group homes in Bedford that do not do what I do, they just in it for the money. And like I say, it's other um group homes in Bedford that do not do what I do. They just in it for the money. They have a lot of people stacked up like sardines. I don't not want that. I just want four to five. That's it. I wanna spoil the mess out of four to five, you know, women, older women, you know, just take care of them, groom them, let them know how special, you know, build their confidence, you know, their work, um, you know, ethic. I wanna make sure um it's it's a clear message going clear across the board. So if you need a list, the application is in my car. I already have all the um requirements posted, the exit fire extinguisher, carbon monoxide, smoke detectors. Every room is um square feet. I'm also in real estate, so I know my measurements very, you know, clear. So um they asked for a blueprint. The blueprint was submitted. Everything in that home, like that house, is perfect for a group home. There is never gonna be cars hanging because they don't have a vehicle. I am their transportation. So there is never, you will never notice anything going on there unless the the only people will know be you. I'll put it like that. That that would be it. So everything, I if you have a question on what to do, I can get it out the car and give it to you.
What, do you and your family live there?
Uh, we are at four eight seven Columbus. I only got that house really to do the group home. I didn't know I had to come in front of you guys and do this tedious process because I wanted to open up another. I was gonna um turn four eight seven into one and move from four eight seven to Oxford. And I was gonna turn Oxford into one in just, you know, just three. I just wanted three. I didn't want more than three. So even if I just have one, you know, it would have been okay. But it's.
Now, I just.
Yeah.
Would be a little crowded if you and your family were living there.
Oh, absolutely. It's not a aesthetic for you and, you know, a family to be there.
Uh, how many bedrooms is it? I I can't see.
Um, it's three bedrooms. The state allows uh two per uh bedroom. But like I say, if it's five, somebody's gonna have their own space. I don't wanna overcrowd people. Um, the square footage was above uh the requirements. Um.
So are people gonna be sharing a room?
Um, yes, that's why I do not wanna do coed. Just two people, one, two, three, four, five, uh, four people will be sharing a room and one will have their own room. It will not be coed. These are like old elderly people. It's like, you know, twenty-four hour care. There is never, no one um not overseeing the people. We are always there with the people. And like I say, it's one to every five uh pe- person. So.
Parking concerns? What was their concern there?
They did not mention that during the last meeting. This was something I just picked up and read.
I think you mentioned you'd park in Antreni Road. You can't park in Antreni Road though.
No, it's a parking lot. I have a garage. The garage is attached to the house. So you can go into the garage and it's a a long driveway. I have a long driveway. So at least four cars can fit in that driveway. Like, right now, I have a a huge transportation van just for them, a Sprinter, just for them. So this is like the the most spoiled people that wanna be in the community that's in a group home.
Okay.
I think they have a lot, Mayor, I think they have a lot of questions. Who who makes the determination that they can independently live? I mean, there's a lot more information that anybody would need to be, in my opinion, to 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 allow it before. I mean, I don't know. I assume it's the state, but I mean, I don't really know what the plan is. Or it's you who make the concern.
No, absolutely not. It's the mental health of society. They come to your home and they look and measure everything. They look through your paperwork and do a background check on you and everybody else in the home to make sure it's safe. So it's ongoing. Uh, the Department of Medicaid did not play. If you're getting any type of.
Well, yeah, yeah. Maybe you need to reapply and re-present all this information. I mean, I I I think council, well, I could be wrong unless you wanna go ahead and approve it next time.
I want to hear more about it because obviously they denied it for a reason.
They said parking. That was it. And um it's just like the rest of the group homes. Yeah.
There's a lot of other reasons. I I I could just mention them. There's no.
Can can we take this the next meeting or?
Sure, if you want.
So we could get the answers and uh see what's going on for real, you know, why they denied and.
I think maybe because they um thought it was probably a sprinkler system involved. There's no sprinkler system. This is the the less of residents.
Yeah, that's.
Ever, and it's a perfect setting.
Cause I don't wanna.
Just a couple of things. Uh, I think some of the reasons that was uh it was denied. I know you mentioned that the fire department uh inspected it, but the building department's never been in there.
No, it goes on after here. Like, if I was to get approved from here, then you guys would come out.
You would be, you're renting this property.
Yes.
So the property has to be registered as a rental. There's a rental registration fee. That hasn't been uh taken care of. The rental inspection hasn't been taken care of. I think there was some confusion because what was presented to the board uh was that it was six individuals. And as I had mentioned at that board meeting, that triggers under the Ohio code, yeah, I was sitting down there, yes. That triggered, that triggered under the Ohio code that once you hit six, the property has to be sprinkled. Then you had referenced five. I think there was some concern over the number of individuals in the home. It's not a very large home. Um, having individuals share rooms, um, that was a concern. Um, so I think it was more so than just the parking. I know you had addressed some of the parking. You mentioned like the staff members, twenty-four hours uh care, two twelve hour shifts, so they would have a vehicle. There's the van, and I think there was one other vehicle. Um, but some of it had to do with the number of occupants in that home, the size of the home. Um.
Your voice playing aside in my head from the last one.
I think it was asked if if it was gonna be coed, um, or if it was gonna be women or men. You had indicated you weren't, you weren't sure at the time.
Nope.
Uh, you had said that, you know, you really haven't thought about it, if it was gonna be for females, if it was gonna be for males. So I think there was just lack of clarity and specifics. And as far as inspections from the building department standpoint, um, we have not been in that home for a few years based on our records.
It's it's very beautiful. Um, because of what you said, I uh went to four to five, so no sprinkler systems. It would not be coed because I don't wanna even have to think about what could have, would have. So it's straight women. And um parking, no more than two vehicles. So um, like I say, um, I have the entire application for the inspection from the Department of uh Mental Health in my car. So if you like it, that's, I will grab it right on off the car.
Yeah, uh, cause what we were voting on is what was presented to the uh planning commission. And it sounds different than what they had. So we could only vote on what they had information on.
Yeah, it's totally different. It's not six people.
That's why it's not the same thing.
Yeah.
Uh, not to get into this, because it sounds like you wanna do the right thing. And uh, what I would suggest, going back to the planning commission with the the new information. And this is a concrete plan. Here it is.
Approval from the state.
Yeah, bring all that stuff to them that they weren't sure about.
Okay.
We don't wanna, otherwise, if we vote on it, we gotta vote on what they decided on.
Okay.
Might be a denial. And I would suggest the easiest way would go back and reapply to the planning commission.
Is it possible that I can um get a reschedule and I could talk to them um tomorrow? Cause I'm pretty familiar with, you know, people over there, so.
Yeah, no, that'll have to be, uh, you check with our clerk on when it could be done and you give her a call and. Okay, then that's what we'll have to do. Uh, we'll have to deny this, then you can go back with what you're presenting now, which seems to make a lot of sense. I mean, not to just go through the steps, but we have to vote on what was presented to us. And I don't wanna, not just deny you period, but I would, uh, so you can go back and and reapply and do it under all the the things you said, which, you know, sounds good to me.
Okay, so.
Yeah, just to to do the.
Will the money transfer over?
We gotta go by the steps here. Pardon?
Will the money and the fees transfer over?
I don't know. There's fifty dollar fee, wouldn't it?
Um, I think I paid a hundred. It was fifty, get another fifty.
We could check on that. But I think for right now, the best thing is we just do the denial based on what we know from our commission. Uh, that's where we get our information. And but leave the door open so you come back in and uh reapply.
No problem.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much for everybody listening. I am on my way to work. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Do you have a motion?
Okay, we, I don't know if we have a motion.
A motion.
I didn't read the motion.
Read the motion.
There's a motion to that effect.
That motion by Asbury, second by Smith. Um, again, a yes means deny, no means not to deny. Hold the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Okay, I perceive motion.
Can we get a motion to accept the planning commission's decision to approve uh Russell A. Hart of GDP Group's proposal to build a new school located at four eighty Northville Road in Bedford, Ohio?
Can I have a motion to accept their decision? By Fluharty, second by Spinks. Before we vote, Tad, if you wanna come forward, uh, you have a short presentation.
Sure.
We need to get out of here, boy, here.
And remember the game.
Thank you. We'll be very short.
This is my first time with this technology.
Second time, so.
There's a, there's a door on it. Thank you for your time tonight. Uh, my name's Russell Gate, architect, project manager with GPD Group. Can you guys see that okay? Um, just wanted to present the plans right now for, uh, this is the same presentation we shared with the planning commission last week. Just give an update on the 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 status of the school projects. Right now, we're working on a sixth or eighth middle school, which will be in the city of Bedford, across the street from the existing high school on Northfield Road, four eighty Northfield. Um, just wanted to kind of give you an update on where we're at so the community can see this and as well as you guys. This is the same plans we shared at the planning commission. Uh, the overall schedule, uh, we've, we've been working for a little over a year on these um projects thus far, working with uh the community on various community meetings, stakeholders, uh, students, staff, um, others on this very long project. Uh, we're getting ready to bid in May twenty twenty-five, so next month, uh, for the building package. We recently received bids for the early site package at the middle school, so we're excited to kind of kick that off with the Board of Education to accept those bids at the meeting next week on Thursday. Um, so we had that process. We're going through planning commission, city council, bidding process, groundbreaking. It's tentatively scheduled for May tenth. Um, construction to begin uh May tenth and go through June of twenty twenty-seven with buildings opening in the fall for students twenty twenty-seven. Just to really touch on community engagement thus far, um, we've had, uh, what I think is the most important piece is a survey that was sent out online and in person for uh just general feedback on what buildings, what this building should look like. I think it's important to note that we talked to students, staff, and educators about what happens inside the building, but community on what these buildings should look like on the outside. So we sent out a survey. It's been a little while now, but received almost five hundred responses, various responses on various buildings, right? Because we're gonna be doing a K-two in Bedford Heights, uh, six eight in Bedford, and a nine twelve in Bedford. And so really to get that feedback from the community on what they wanted their district to look like in the future. Uh, as you can see in the middle section, just a bar graph, uh, really modern and contemporary was the peak uh response. And we didn't necessarily wanna just define that by two words. They were given options to review those on images. So like, which which image do you like the best? Which image do you like? And that really narrowed down our focus because we can design buildings, but we wanna be able to design buildings for Bedford uh that are gonna be a reflection of the community that these buildings serve. We got a lot of great feedback from that. We did it in person and online to make sure we can get as much feedback as we can. Uh, this was just a breakdown. Uh, for instance, K two colorful, that was the highest ranking. Uh, but you wouldn't necessarily expect that in the middle school and high school. You get more refined, you get more polished and maybe a little more collegiate when you get to the high school level, but more playful in the K two. So we, this was a great, great survey, great feedback we received. The six eight building is uh is obviously on the existing Peter Chanel High School site on Northfield Road, across the street from the high school. This building kind of situates just west of the existing Chanel site, or building, I should say. It it will keep and maintain the existing field um on the west side of that site for future use. Um, the stars indicate the main entry for the building, and then the pods on the northern side of that are the six, seventh, and eighth grade wings. Um, I won't get into all the details of the floor plan. There's security and safety that we wanna maintain. So just from a general standpoint, I'll kind of give you the flow of the traffic. One thing we wanted to maintain was vehicular and bus traffic, completely separate entrances off of Northfield Road. Fortunately, there were already two, so we just relocated one of the entrances to align Bonnie View. So we're aligning that drive uh so that's helps with traffic circulation off of Northfield. Um, the bus parking doubles as event parking in the back so that athletics can happen on this site. Um, and we'll just double stripe that lot so you can gain kind of some extra parking spaces. And um, we did a traffic study. I think it's important to note, um, obviously, this was a high school. Um, traffic will be similar or less than that in the future with a middle school function. And there's a high school across the street, obviously, that will be uh new in the future, but currently existing with the construction of this six eight building. The traffic study showed that they want two Egress lanes onto Northfield Road, and so this plan currently shows those two Egress lanes for vehicular traffic. Uh, excited to share the renderings. We've um, we've shared some at board meetings for the district, but these are more polished versions of those renderings. So just wanted to show um the brick, the the metal panel on this, the lot of glazing. One of the things that came up on the survey was, we want glazing, but then we heard from the community that to be careful with glazing because then there's some safety and security concerns. So we tried to put glazing high up so that that wasn't accessible from uh potential threats. And so, you know, the the windows are low and uh we wanted to get a lot of natural light into the top through clear sort of windows, which you can see on some of these other views. A night shot. This is one of those um educational classroom pods, so classrooms on either side with a with a science lab within here. There's also an extended learning area to be ready for twentieth century learning. So we're trying to get a lot of daylight in there, but with glazing, that's high up. Included in the planning commission submission quickly, just a lot of details about parking, uh, traffic flow, detention basin. Um, there's no underground storage for detention, just above ground on the west side of the campus. And a lot of details uh that go into the planning commission's review, but just wanted to give you guys a highlight on where we are at, what we submitted. And if you have any questions or um concerns, welcome to answer any questions.
Do we have questions?
Will there be any, um, cause I know, Dad, when you, these things actually put out there, you guys are talking about Glendale coming down town. What are you gonna do with Glendale?
Well, so um, the plan is to um eliminate some of our existing buildings. Now, things have changed a bit um since we first did the plan. Initially, we were gonna take down all the elementaries. Um, potentially, that may not, we may leave one up to house our preschool program. Um, the the K-two building uh had, we had what's called LFI money, locally funded initiative money um in there for pre-k wing. Unfortunately, costs with inflation have pushed us to the point where we had to eliminate from our, that from our new building program. So we will locate our preschool program in an existing school. Um, and most likely, it'll either be Glendale or Carrollwood, but we don't know yet for sure. That decision hasn't been made. We have a little time yet to make that decision. Board does.
There was also uh locally funded initiatives to include a new Board of Education uh office, which has been eliminated as well.
Yeah, so um, so we did pay some pressure just from inflation. Um, the cost set numbers uh from two thousand. The cost set numbers from two thousand twenty three did not hold up well. And so, you know, we're, we haven't bid out the whole bill, the building yet, but we stopped at every step of the design to check our pricing, you know, with contractors. G P D also hired an outside company to come and do cost estimating. So the short answer is, Glendale may still be there. We don't know for sure if it'll be Glendale or or another school, but the short answer is it may still be there. Central almost certainly will be coming to that.
So as I said, when you first put this this plan out here, you, the money that you got from residents accounted for that Glendale building?
Yeah, it accounted for it being there.
Are you saying that recession or the inflation has totally took that money and directed it to another, to another area?
No, it, you know, the the total project budget for the school district included the demolition of the four existing elementary schools.
Right.
They've beaten the demolition. Unfortunately, the cost of building the new schools, which is the primary purpose, has accelerated so much. I mean, we're down to state minimum. The schools are much smaller than what we initially anticipated just because of the fact that inflation has been so high. So we we are still building the great schools, but there, there's no extra fluff or space, extra space in there for things that we don't need. It's it's all what we need and no more, so.
Any other questions?
Did we, did we get a motion to accept?
A motion.
Okay.
Call the roll, please. This is number C, the commission decided to approve it, but yes, you agree with them, no, you don't agree. Call the roll.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance number twenty nine dash twenty five.
It's an ordinance providing for the adoption of new material, new matter in our codified ordinance of Bedford, approving, adopting, and enacting the March twenty twenty fifth replacement pages of our ordinances to recall certain sections that are in conflict with with those sections and declaring an emergency.
Yeah, this is just something we do periodically, just to keep our city codes in line with the state and federal codes. And if we had made any changes, a lot of paperwork goes into that. We have a motion. Do you have a motion? Yeah, we have one. Okay, call the roll.
No, I don't have one.
Oh. Okay, a motion by Fluharty, second by Salvi. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Yeah, we need a third and final, third and final by Asbury, second by Longino. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty dash twenty five.
I'm sorry. There was a reading that ordinance. I actually read this. All right, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Ohio Risk Management, Inc. for property and liability insurance coverage for the city of Bedford and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion for suspension by Smith, second by Asbury. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. As the ordinance references, this is our annual contract for our insurance coverage for property and liability, all structures, properties, parks, all of that throughout the city of Bedford. The city was previously with J W S. J W S was a small entity comprised of approximately twenty to twenty five municipalities across the state of Ohio. Ohio Risk Management is through the Ohio Plan, which is a group of over eight hundred. Very detailed. We've actually increased some of our coverage. They also were out, provided a very thorough site visit, site visit to all of our buildings, properties, parks, provided recommendations. We've been with them. This will be the second full year, and it's definitely been, I believe, the city's got better coverage than what we, and not to say anything in the past, but much more expanded coverage.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty one dash twenty five.
It's an ordinance amending ordinance number fifty one dash twenty three, which authorized the approval of engineering fees to G D P Group for its services regarding design and and engineering services for the Bedford Commons Expansion Project Modification One in the city of Bedford and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension, Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Longino, second by Asbury. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. We're amending the original ordinance that outlined all of the the design fees, engineering fees for this project. The reason is, just prior to going out to bid, we had requested some changes be made to the design, specifically the undergrounds. And we designed conduit runs through various sections of this park in this space. In the event that we need to utilize either for additional cameras or electrical in the future, we'll have the ability to do so. We've also added some public utility for vendors, food trucks, whatnot, for events on South Park. So we made some slight adjustments, and the increased fees is the reason for amending this ordinance.
And just makes sense to do it now instead of try and do it later at a higher cost and disrupting the project. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty two dash twenty five.
It's an ordinance authorizing the approval of engineering fees to G P D Group for its services regarding the former University Hospitals property located at forty four Blaine Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Asbury, second by Smith. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Mike again?
Thank you, Mayor. Working with the title company as we work to transfer the property for the settlement agreement, a full topographic survey has to be conducted on the entire site with all of the parcels. G P D Group will be performing that. Also, part of the settlement agreement with the University Hospitals, they have to reimburse the city half of the cost associated with all of that work. So they will be reimbursing us the cost for that specific survey. This also includes, as I referenced, the property, I think there's nine parcels. If you look at a parcel map, it is, it's a mess. So we're also going to be working to consolidate those nine parcels, especially on the main campus area down to four. So we'll need new legal descriptions, plat maps, and all of that filed through the county. And that's, work is associated with this legislation, sorry.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty three dash twenty five. Authorizing the approval of engineering fees to G P D Group for inspection services and administrative support for the Bedford Commons Expansion Project in the city of Bedford and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Longino, second by Asbury. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. As referenced in the legislation, this will primarily cover an onsite inspector as we get into the deep part of the work to monitor the project, report back to the city. There'll also administrative support, help with any change orders or other requests that may arise.
I understand this is a maximum. It could be less.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty four dash twenty five.
Authorizing a contract with G P D Group for services regarding additional work for the Greencroft Culvert Replacement Project and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Longino, second by Smith. Mike again?
This is in regards to the Greencroft Project as stated, the initial project, which is being funded through a state, through the State Infrastructure Bank, called for, obviously, the culvert replacements, some minor asphalt work and waterline replacement under the culvert. When this area was excavated, a change order was presented to us for a large section of the sanitary sewer that was failing and needed to be replaced. We did move forward to make that replacement. It has been approved through the State Infrastructure Bank. Part of that approval process is having council approve legislation for us to say.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty five dash twenty five. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Mr. Escavator, Inc. for their, for additional work for the Greencroft Road Culvert Replacement Project and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Salvi. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Asbury, second by Smith. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is to authorize us to pay the contractor that was awarded for this site the change order work in regards to the failing sanitary sewer.
Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty six dash twenty five.
Authorizing the engineering, authorizing engineering services through G D P Group for the development of the wastewater improvement program at the wastewater treatment plant and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Longino, second by Asbury. Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. The city is obligated to respond to the Ohio E P A by the end of April, presenting a long-term capital plan for the wastewater treatment facility. This legislation is in reference to G P D's assistance in outlining multiple scenarios that we will present. Clarify, multiple scenarios that were outlined. We will only present one scenario to start as we work to negotiate a long-term plan with the Ohio E P A. Also referenced in this legislation is the need to have an outside financial analysis, which is basically a rate study. So all of the improvements that the Ohio E P A would like to see and how long of a duration that would be, be it ten years, all the way up to forty years. To accomplish that, what would the rates need to be increased to? I think it's very important to show that. I think it'll be very important to show, that's why you do a no feasible alternative study. You know, we cannot be in a position to raise rates from thirty dollars a month to two hundred and thirty dollars a month for improvements if the Ohio E P A wants to see those done in less than ten years. You know, you're talking over a quarter or two hundred and fifty million dollars. So our scenarios and our rate analysis is what this legislation is for.
Just a point of clarification, G P D Group is our engineering firm that we have on retention. That's why they mentioned on so many of these ordinances.
Call the roll, please. They're also involved with all these projects already.
Call the roll, please.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Longino?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
And now we come to the hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address, your comment.
That's all right.
That's Monday, five thirteen, Lansing Avenue. I'm here tonight as president of the Bedford Garden Club, and we are pleased to announce the Garden Club is, has decided to make the following donations to the city of Bedford. Giving seven hundred dollars towards those new planters, one of the train people, and a check for one hundred dollars for Arbor Day.
Thank you. Pass it on to our finance director. Well, thank you. The Garden Club always comes through on these things and takes care of our flowers out here. We really appreciate that. Anyone else?
Bob Dieterich, three seven, Santa Circle, Bedford, Ohio. I would like to talk about Ms. Johnson's Essence Residential Care Facilities. I don't know if the planning commissioner was aware on that. I asked her, and what she is proposing is a group home for mentally retarded. Am I safe? No, not a hit, a half and half on that, it was that sort. I had experience in that field. I forgot my degree and education. I worked for the state of Ohio, County, you know, the state of Ohio, at the Warrensville Center, Warrensville's residential center, where they call them. Basically, they're, they're still shelters for mentally retarded. Prior to that, I'd worked with Hyrum House, Camp Awakaya, day camps, on that for mental retarded. I can tell you a big thing between a group home and a residential facility. One's a jail and one's a place to live. People that she's picking up probably deserve it more than any of us ourselves. And I can tell you, the job she does is more than most of us can bear. People want to show. I can tell from her what she wants. I would strongly suggest that the council consider her. And strongly present that she has an opportunity if the planning commission can send her information on what's going to be required for that. Maybe it would be the planning commission's advantage if they could send out a package in advance for each of them so they know what they're looking out for, and so they know how to present themselves. And I noticed last time with the masseuse therapist, we have a Broadway that's been here about two years. When she first presented herself, it was not clear what she meant. When she came back the second time, it was clear that it was for a physical therapy person on that, because I do know at the time that that area, if it was considered as a, that was actually unsold for massages, or for massages, which could be taken that. But it was massage therapy, licensed massage therapy. I think things should be considered here. It's very, I just emphasize that this group home is literally a home for It's very, I just emphasize that this group home is literally a home for people who are mentally retarded on that. Those are the people that I see get on the bus and go, I saw a young man who went on the bus two years on the same bus going to the Marriott where he worked as a janitor every single day, and went back to that group home on that. This is the best place for these people to be, and the best thing for us, because there's no reason for us to worry about what's going to happen, only a part of the property, that's very offensive, didn't they bring a property that is on that? That's going to be extra money for the city to begin with on that. Along with the, it's going to be a business, so it's going to ruin it that way. I just want to emphasize on that, I would strongly suggest that we reconsider what she has to say, and then speak with the planning commission so that they are aware of, or maybe if you can give her information in advance so she can have it prepared for you.
Just real quickly, the planning commission did ask, we were, they were, I sit on that commission, and we asked what she had mentioned. We're very familiar with what she was ultimately presenting, because we made sure, you know, it wasn't a drug or alcohol, we knew exactly that. I think it was, there just wasn't any clarity. Like when she first presented it with six individuals, and then she said, well, I'll drop down to this number, and then it was, well, it's never been, she stated it was inspected, but it was never, the building department's never inspected it. So some of it is just presenting a clear plan of this number of people, the planning commission asked about coed, and she's like, well, I never really thought about that. So maybe more details and hard items in the plan, I think that would have been, I think the lack of clarity is ultimately why the commission denied. I think they commended her for the efforts and what she was trying to do, but there was no hard facts on what specifically was going to take place there. And there was, there was some concerns over just the size of that property and individuals sharing the same room, but again, you know, thank you for the comments.
And I can tell you, we have nothing against group homes. We have several of them all through town, never been a problem. Most people don't even know they're there.
I understand, sir, I just want to, you know, that I just remember the incident of the situation with the woman before, who was a therapist, who, well, she presented herself, and I'm sure a lot of people just took it as though she was wanting to create this, a massage setup, but it was a therapy, and I think that's what I just wanted to make clarify that it was a group home for mentally retarded. Thank you.
Seeing none, I have a motion for interdiction by Lou Hardy, second by Spinks, call the roll, please.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Asbury?[1791.82]